Okay, okay, counsel. Think we're all, we're all set. We're all set and um. Good evening to everybody. Can everybody hear? Everybody good? Okay, okay, um, good evening, everybody. So if everybody would please stand and join me on the open prayer with Reverend Sandy Casey Martez, which is a very special neighbor of mine that I'm going to introduce, and she's going to start off with the opening prayer. Can you hear me, Sandy? You can hit, hit unmute, hit unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Yep, there we go. There we go. Take your time.
Blessed be the internet. I'm so grateful to have Chuck and Julie as my neighbors and very delighted to be a member of the Eastern community. I moved here in June. I am getting accustomed to the hospitality and the beauty of this area and have thought quite a bit about what I might say as an introduction to our prayer this evening. As we all know, we're struggling with an event in our lives that is unusual and challenging and one with which I hope we will all traverse together and come out the other side. Recently, I read an article about an emergency room doctor Nicholas Taylor, a physician in Sacramento, California. And he was commenting on the fact that a patient came in dying of COVID and he was immediately called to his side. And the man looked up to him and said, please don't let me die. And the doctor said, I'll do everything I can to help you. And they took his shirt off in preparation to rehabilitate him and stabilize him and treat him. And on his chest were immunity tattoos and slogans. And the doctor was Jewish, the nurse was a black woman, and the respiratory therapist was Asian. And all three of them came to a moment of deep reflection and simultaneously realized that what they shared in common, the desire to live and the desire to serve and the desire to help transcended every tattoo, every garment, every title, every mosque, synagogue, and church. And in that moment of please don't let me die and I'm going to do everything I can do to help you, everything dissolved into a joint effort to heal and to attend. And everything was done to the greatest of ability to save this man. They overcame their fears and their isolation. And most of all, they admitted their hesitation, but even in that, they overcame their hesitation. They held each other up to ensure that they would continue to give what was necessary to the man on the table. The reason I brought that up is because you are a council of leaders that have been entrusted to care for and serve and to protect all of the people of the Eastern community. And we come from very varied backgrounds, political, psychological, emotional, economic, religious, that have varying points of views and varying cultures, habits, food, you name it. But underneath all of those apparent appearances of difference, there is this bond that we share as human beings. When a child cries in India, a woman weeps in New York City because a mother knows what it means to have a child in pain. Those fundamental human experiences are what a community shares in common. And as representatives of that community, I know that you will strive, as this emergency room doctor did, to go deep, deep within your own bodies and souls and hearts and minds to find the common ground of humanity that will serve one another in the most perfect ways.
Thank, thank you, Sandy.
And so I'd like to end with a short prayer of guidance.
Thank you.
Oh, God, who the meek are guided in judgment and light does rise in the dark for all. Grant in all of our doubts and uncertainties the grace to ask what you would have us do and a spirit of wisdom that would save us from any false choice. And that in that light we see light and in that straight path we do not stumble. We ask this in the name of the God who creates and loves and sustains us all. Amen.
Amen. Thanks a lot. Now let's follow by the Pledge of Allegiance of the flag. Our pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, that was really, really pretty. Thank you. Thanks a lot, Sandy. I really appreciate it.
I was, I'm sorry it was so hard to get set up, but I apologize.
That's okay. No, no problem at all. You mean a lot to us and thanks a lot.
Love you all. Bye bye.
Okay. Okay. Counsel, um, counsel, we have before us an agenda. Um, let's see here now. Counsel has an agenda for December 8th before us. If there's any additions, deletions, or corrections in the agenda. Here none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted with unanimous consent. We'll move on to minutes. October 13th, October 27th. Counsel has a chance to review the minutes of the 13th and the 27th of October. Is there any addition, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Callahan, we, we actually, we actually only have the October 13th minutes. So those are the only ones I think we can properly act on tonight.
Okay, sorry. So we'll just look at the minutes of the 13th then. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So is there any addition, deletions, corrections of the minutes other than the 27th? We're here none. So the chair moves that the minutes be accepted with unanimous consent. Okay, on next on the agenda would be the disbursements for the 24th of November, December 1st, and December 8th. Counsel has had a chance to review the disbursements from the 24th, 1st, and the 8th. Any additions, deletions, or corrections in the disbursements? Everybody good? Here in none, the chair moves that the disbursements be accepted with unanimous consent. Okay, now, um, what we have, an update on the COVID relief CARES program, I think Clay's on here. I'm the director of the Department of Emergency Services and Assistant County Manager at the moment. Clay?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. And joining me is Angela Lane, who is also, you know, on this committee that was formed by the council. I sent, I'm going to be reviewing a memo that I sent to you on December 2nd, giving you an update and providing some recommendations relative to the the CARES grant. And initially, what I'd like to say is we're in day 272 of the Emergency Operations Center activation for the COVID-19 worldwide pandemic. And we are operating in support of the Health Department and frankly, our entire community by providing communication and coordination. And I just, you know, can never pass up the opportunity to talk about the wonderful things our community is doing together in a very difficult time. And, uh, you know, I think that we, if we, if we talk more about that, we'd feel better about things. Uh, but I'm going to move into the, the CARES update. And again, joining me is Angela Lane and Nancy Andrew is here. And of course, Corey has been a part of that committee as well. So in March, we were notified that we were to receive a CARES Act grant for Talbot County. That was broken into two, um, two areas of payment. Uh, one, $3.2 million that went to the Health Department for public health needs, direct public health needs. The $3.2 million that went to the county government to support efforts to combat the coronavirus. At that time, the county working with the Health Department submitted a plan to the State Health Department. Um, and in that plan that we identified original pathways to extend funding. It was really, it was very clear early on that the council wanted to pass as much of this funding as possible to affect people. They recognize, you all recognize that the business community was being significantly impacted, individuals were being impacted. And of course, we, from an operations perspective, had the needs to be able to get, continue to serve the public. So originally, um, the, the areas of funding, and Angela, please jump in if you feel like there's something you want to stress as I continue to talk through this. Initially, the areas of funding were directed as follows. Uh, the first is assistance to small businesses facing business disruptions, $1.2 million. Cassandra Van Hoosier, who's on here as well, stepped up along with the Economic Development Commission and put together a small business grant program and has done outstanding work. Um, and they, and I, I just want to take a minute. Cassandra, could you talk real briefly about the success of that program?
Clay, I don't think she's connected, so if you could keep going, that'd be great until she gets on.
Thank you, Chuck. Anyway, that program, they far exceeded the $1.2 million. I'll talk about how we're shifting a few dollars there in a few minutes. The second program was to assist individuals struggling due to loss of income and employment, and $1.2 million was directed toward that, that area. And then finally, $800,000 to support emergency operations in the county. And that's broken out to, to support our food pantries, serving meals and food to the public, those that are unemployed and struggling, to support emergency operations for personal protective equipment, sheltering, and other related services. The duration of the grant was March, uh, March 1st, 2020 through December 30th, 2020. So where we are right now is we're coming down to 20 some days before we come to the end. Uh, that takes us to next steps. And so the committee is approaching the council with some recommendations to, to, to adjust funding, to ensure that we make sure, to assure that we spend the, the majority of the money where you want it to go. The relocation of funds, the recommendation is that additional funding for a small business grant of up to $10,000 to address unmet needs among county businesses, nonprofits. Launched November 30th, 2020, we want to move $250,000 over to that program because it is so successful. The second item we want to do is move $53,000 over to the distribution of meals. Small grants to five standing food pantries in the county who is and in the cost of the Eastern Elks Lodge, 1622 for mobile pantries. And then finally, mental health first aid care for emergency services personnel for $9,000. Angela, I'm going to pause here to make sure that I'm in line there.
Yeah, the one thing I would add at this point is that the funding for the food pantries was part of our individual assistance program. We now have just come up with a dollar amount to support our food pantries and to support some other food programs. So, well, it says it's a reallocation. That was in our original plan that was submitted to the state back in March.
Great. Thank you, Angela. And then moving down, the alternative qualifying investments. Again, we, we want to, we want to shift here and make sure that we're continuing to do our best to combat the COVID crisis. Uh, we're recommending the following, hazard pay for public safety employees for the period of time where we're under state of emergency from March 16th to June 30th, an amount of $367,000. Grants to volunteer fire departments, up to $30,000 per department for their preparedness response as they continue to serve amid, uh, serve amid the pandemic. A mobile triage unit for emergency services to help with public health responses, $158,000. And emergency assistance to the neighborhood service center for retention of COVID-19 assistance, a staff position if the state funding is cut out for $5,000. So this is a recommendation that the committee is making to the county council. Other than, I would ask, Corey, if you have anything that you would like to say, certainly you led the committee's efforts and were certainly instrumental in a lot of our successes. So I would ask if you have anything that you would like to share.
Uh, thank you, Clay. I wanted to say that, um, you know, Angela, Linda, Cassandra, Nancy, yourself, Andy, committee worked really diligently to come up with a good plan to make sure that we did not send any funds back to the state. But yet, at the same time, we wanted to touch as many touch points here in the county as we possibly could. And what the council is looking at now is the committee's, um, efforts to touch as many points as we possibly can through feeding programs. Uh, the Heroes Program for our emergency services people. And also recognizing that our local volunteer fire departments also took a big hit trying to ramp up for COVID as well. So we were, we were looking to touch as many touch points as we possibly could. And what the council sees now is that committee's effort. So I just want to say, um, again, Angela Geneva and Nancy and the rest of the committee that are a yomenish driver putting this together.
Thank you, Councilmember Pack. And Nancy Andrew, I know you're on. Would you like to add anything?
Uh, thank you, Clay. I just want to thank the council. Their willingness to get this money out in the community and impact people was a bit of a leap of faith since we didn't have a roadmap to follow when the pandemic arrived on everyone's doorsteps. I also want to give a shout out to the Department of Social Services. They have gone back to idea after idea to get the word out about the individual assistance program. And it has certainly taken hold this fall, unfortunately, because that means more of our neighbors in need. But they have deployed more of their staff in the last few weeks to try to process the applications that are coming in at even a greater pace than we reported on in the memo. So they really deserve some accolades at a time when their services are increasing or the demand for their services is increasing anyway. They're going above and beyond to try to get as much of this individual assistance money out to our neighbors as possible. So thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And so, Mr. Council President, members of the council, again, the committee is asking for your support for our recommendation. Clearly, we are still in the midst of this pandemic and we have worked hard to make sure we achieve that balance between adhering to safety precautions, yet still continuing with business and life, our lives, um, every day. We'll continue to do so, but this is our recommendation to you this evening.
That sounds great, Clay. I really appreciate all your hard work, Corey and Nancy and Angela and the whole committee. Really, really appreciate all your efforts and all your hard work on this. So let's open it up for, um, counsel, for, for council comments. Go ahead, Laura.
Well, I guess the first thing you might be looking for is a motion to accept your recommendations. Certainly appreciate everything that, that everybody has done. And I remember you saying early on, oh, my goodness, if we get to day 50, you're just going to just put, bury your head in your hands. And now day 270, whatever. So I think this is a, an excellent use of, of the money that we have left over. We certainly hope that the Congress between now and the end of the year will do something to, to extend these into the past January 1st, 2021. It's still a possibility. As a matter of fact, we're going to get an update tomorrow. One of our MECO sessions, which, which is open, obviously, to all of the elected officials in the state of Maryland and, and staff and things like that. And the Budget and Tax Committee, we are going to hear from Andrew Shoffel and from Mark, and I can't remember his last name, from NACO, to give us some updates on that. But I'm going to be sharing what we're doing for, to the other counties to do that. Without, I'm making a motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
We got a, um, a motion on the floor to go with the recommendations of the committee to disperse this money out to certain disbursements that the committee has come up with to help the community.
Mr. Callahan, I, I, just by way of discussion on this item, I can't imagine that we're going to get, see anything but support on this. But I just want to echo the thanks to the committee for making sure that this funding is dispersed in a way that is going to have the most impact on the most people in our community and for the, the ones in greatest need. A lot of, a lot of good visioning has gone into this and clearly we are, we see the, we see the sunset on this funding coming. And we are acting with, with alacrity and prudence to make sure the job gets done. Congratulations and thank you.
Well, I'd also like, like to add also that, you know, the hazard pay to our emergency service workers, EMTs, paramedics, the deputies, detention center, and 911 workers who during the state of emergency, when hardly anybody was working, for them to, to do this and put themselves at risk in a, in a, in a time that was very, very unknown. I think we know a little bit more what we're dealing with now, but it's, it's not a huge thank you, but it is, it is an extra thank you. And I think it's, it's a good place for that money to go because they really, they always put their lives on the line, but this is a special time for them to do that. So Clay, thank you for thinking about for this.
Mr. Davilio?
So I'll follow up with Mrs. Price's remarks. And I do agree, yes, the, the funds are, are, the time's running out. We need to spend this. Uh, we've chosen some excellent areas to give this money to for the, the needs that's out there. And it seems like the needs are growing in every direction. We've been very fortunate on the county. I don't believe we've had to furlough anybody or lay anybody off. You know, there's only so much money that's in the bucket at the starting of the year. And we're in a fortunate position where some money's been added to us from the government. And we're able to use that money to thank and reward those who have been protecting us the most, who are riding in the ambulance, who are seeing these sick passengers who are going to the hospital. So, uh, money's always tight. It's always an issue. I compliment the, uh, this commission for finding the best use of this money and making sure that we had, we received enough to, to give out. So thank you very much.
And, and Chuck, if I, if I could add, I know Cassandra wasn't able to.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Is that, um, the business community here in Talbot County, hopefully they recognize what, uh, the CARES committee and this council has done. We have put almost in excess of $2 million, but once everything has been issued out, almost in excess of $2 million into the business community here in Talbot County. Cassandra, through her committee, has spent all of the 1.2 that was initially allocated to her. She received another $538,000 for restaurants. That money is going out shortly. And as you can see here, the recommendation of the committee is to put another $250,000 onto the business side. So I hope that word gets out to the business community to hear people saying, hey, Talbot County didn't think about us. That is not true. Challenge that because we have, when this is all over and said and done, Talbot County will put almost $2 million back into local business.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. That's a good point. Um, I hope the community does, um, recognize all the stuff that we're trying to feed the businesses and keep businesses alive and, 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 and well. So do I need to put this, Mr. Hallis, do I need to put this? Got a, we got a motion on the floor and a second. Do I need to put a vote to this? Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan, before you do, I, I just wanted to, I wanted to add one more and I apologize.
Yeah, sure.
I had, I had a chance to speak already on this, but I, I'm, I'm asking for the liberty to, to do it a second time. I want to be careful that we, we don't, we don't characterize, uh, the payments to the emergency workers as, as simply a reward. It is that, but it's more than that. These are people who, when the rest of us, uh, were, um, were sent to work remotely, were, uh, were able to do that, they could not. Daycares closed, schools were closed. These people had to make real sacrifices in order to, just to show up for work. This, this came at a cost. This is, this is compensation as well. It's really important that we, that we, uh, make them right. And, and I'm, I'm glad that we're able to do that with this funding.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher. I appreciate that comment. Um, I couldn't agree more. So, anybody else? Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Committee members, should I vote? But I'll go aye.
Okay, okay, counsel, we've got a unanimous, um, okay, so, um.
So, Mr. Council President, I would just like to thank the county council for your continued leadership. Truly, uh, this is an example that we should focus on. We, we'll fight, we're still in the middle of the fight. We're not, we've not reached the end, but you know, as I always say, in a ship in a storm, we keep the bow in the sea. The sun will come out. We just need to do, do due diligence and with your leadership, we'll continue to do that. Thank you all.
Thank you. We really appreciate your leadership too. Okay, counsel. Let's move on to legislation, um, and our introduction to legislation. Counsel's next item, introduction to legislation. Madam Secretary, would you read the title to the bill for the record, please?
An ordinance to adopt the codification and revision of the ordinances of Talbot County, Maryland, providing for the maintenance of said code, establishing a penalty for altering or tampering with the code and making certain substantive changes in previously adopted ordinances.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. So, um, Tony, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay, okay. So, um, could you give us some, um, information and, and kind of break it down a bit so everybody sort of understands what we're doing here?
Yes, absolutely.
I appreciate it.
So under the Talbot County Charter, at least once every 20 years, the county has to compile and recodify all of the Talbot County laws. And so what that involves for us is working with the general code publishers company who publishes our code and working through the way to recodify, recompile, reformat, and reorganize the code so it can be reissued. And that's what's occurred here. The last time that we did one of these was in 2001. And so we are almost 20 years later to do the same update and the same exercise. So the bill that you have before you is very similar to the bill that was adopted in 2001. And it provides for the recompiling, recodification of the Talbot County code and makes certain minor changes that general code publisher identified in connection with that. Mostly it's reformatting, it's updating certain references. If a law has changed or been recodified in the General Assembly, this code update will have that updated reference. So that's the purpose of this.
I see, I see. Counsel? Counsel like to comment? Good? Okay, um, thank you, Tony. Um, because, uh, we are meeting virtually. I'm going to ask Madam Secretary to conduct a roll call to introduce the legislation.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye. Okay, we've introduced it. I'm sorry. Somebody say something? Okay, Madam Secretary, can you announce the bill number to the public and the hearing date, please?
Yes, this will be known as Bill Number 1467. And the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 12, 2021, at 6:30 PM.
That sounds great. I think that's all we have on that. It sounds great. Anybody have anything else on before we move on to the public hearing? Okay, the public hearing is running just five minutes late at 6:30. So for the public hearing, council will be holding a public hearing. Madam Secretary, will you please read the first resolution into the record, please?
Resolution Number 297. The resolution authorizing the transfer of a portion of Glenwood Avenue in as-is condition to the Town of Easton by quick clean deed for no monetary consideration.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing on Resolution 297. So Parker, do we have anybody on the line?
Okay, we have several callers connected to the session through the computer and also through their telephone. If any of the viewers or callers would like to speak, please either press the hands up button or star three on your phone to indicate that you would like to speak.
Okay, and I want to lay the little bit of the ground rules. Mrs. Price, will you do the time? Can you take off mute, please? Off mute. There you go.
Before you, yes, but I do have a question. Can we get a short explanation of this? Normally, right before we have a public hearing, there might be somebody, whether it's Tony or somebody else, who would give us a little bit of an explanation of what this is about.
Tony, can you do that?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, so this is a resolution that we have introduced and are considering at the request of the Town of Easton. And the county currently owns and maintains this section of Glenwood Avenue. The section that we're talking about is the section between the bypass and the Tred Avenue River. This is in an area where the town has built a new footbridge over the Tred Avenue River that connects to Easton Village to Glenwood Avenue. And so the Town of Easton, as I understand it, is requesting that we convey this section of road, which is located entirely within the Town of Easton. The county just happens to still own and maintain the road. And so they requested that we convey it to them. They would take over the ownership and maintenance of the road. It would still be a public road. And I think this would allow the town to make certain improvements that they may want to make in connection with having a walking corridor from Easton Village over the footbridge into the town.
Sounds great.
Okay, we do have one caller.
Okay, I wanted to lay out the ground rules first so everybody realizes. So three minutes for an individual and five minutes if you're representing an organization or group.
Okay, caller, begin.
I'm not speaking on this particular issue, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Okay, that was the only caller that has indicated they wish to speak.
Okay. So we'll close the public hearing on Hearing 297. Resolution 297 is eligible for vote on December 15, unless council wishes to move resolution to the third reader tonight for your actions.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to be moved to 297, third reader this evening.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to move 297 to third reader. Madam Secretary.
Resolution Number 297.
I ask that so much be considered a reading.
Mr. President, as a point of order, you probably need to take a vote on the motion.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
You need to take a motion to move it to the third reader?
Yeah, I'll take a motion for the third reader.
Vote.
Madam Secretary, vote for the third reader.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye. All right, all right. Thank you. Okay, we've got a motion second, and Bill Number 297 passes.
That was, that was, that vote was on the motion to move it to the third reader. So now we need to move it to the third reader and then take a vote on the actual resolution.
Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, vote for the third reader, please.
Actually, Mr. Callahan, you're taking a vote on the actual motion now. You've already moved it to third reader.
Okay, now we're taking a motion on our vote on Motion 297. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
As a point of order, she has to actually read the resolution. It's now been moved to be read a third time, so she has to read it.
Or at least until I interrupt her.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you read, could you read the resolution, please?
Resolution Number 297.
I ask that so much be considered a reading.
Thank you. Now, now we're ready to put it for vote. Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call for the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye. Got a motion, and it has passed. And now Resolution 297 has passed. Thank you, Madam Secretary. So we can move on to our next bill, which was 1466. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that, please?
Bill Number 1466. A bill to authorize Talbot County, Maryland, the county, to borrow not more than $350,000 in order to finance and refinance improvements to certain wastewater facilities in the county and to effect such borrowing by the issuance and sale of one or more series of its general obligation bonds payable from ad valorem taxes to be levied by the county, exempting the bonds from the provisions of Sections 19-205 and 19-207 of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, authorizing the consolidation of separate series of bonds into one or more bonds, authorizing the refunding of such bonds, and relating generally to the issuance and sale of such bonds for such purposes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Do we want to, I guess Angela, she's going, she's there. Angela, would you mind just kind of giving her a brief on this, please?
Yes, this is the enabling legislation to allow the council to borrow up to $350,000 from the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development Program. This is part of an agreement that the county entered into in May of 2020 with Rural Development to allow the county to borrow the $350,000 of bond funds and accept a grant of $1,050,000 to make additional improvements to the St. Michael's wastewater collection system.
I appreciate that, Angela. Council have any questions? Okay, we're going to open it to the public hearing on Bill 1466. Mr. Dorm, do we have any callers?
Okay, callers, if you wish to speak, please press asterisk three on your phone. If you're on the computer, press the raise hand button. We do have one caller with their hand up, but it may be from before. So I'm going to unmute that same caller again. Asterisk three also puts the hand down. Caller, please begin. Okay, no one has indicated they wish to speak.
Okay, all right. All right. I will close the public hearing on 1466. 1466 is eligible for vote on Tuesday, the 15th, unless council wishes to move the resolution to third reader tonight for action.
Mr. President, I would make the motion that we move Bill 1466 to third reader this evening.
Second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second to move 1466 to third reader.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right. A motion and a second, and it's passed to move to third reader. Madam Secretary, can you read the bill, please?
Bill Number 1466.
I ask that so much be considered a reading.
No objection.
Madam Secretary, we've moved it to third reader now. Can we call for a vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right. Bill 1466 has passed, and that's great. And we'll move on to, does anybody have anything else on 1466? If we don't, we'll move on to eligible votes. Okay, council's next to have a bill Number 1465 eligible for vote. Madam Secretary, would you please read for the record?
Bill Number 1465. A bill to adopt the Cordova Village Master Plan, December 2019, in accordance with the 2016 Talbot County Comprehensive Plan and the provisions of Local Government Article Section 10324 and Land Use Article Section 1405 and Sec. Annotated Code of Maryland.
Okay, I think Miguel and Mary Kay, they are, can you hear us? Mary Kay and Miguel? Okay, until they get straight and get on here, let's open for discussion with council.
Well, Mr. Callahan, I'm actually eager to, I know that there were some.
Miguel and Mary Kay have unmuted their computers, so they should be able to speak. Well, it's me now.
Okay. Can you hear me, President Pack? I'm sorry, President Callahan, I'm sorry.
That's understandable. That's my first one. Okay, that's all. Don't make this all exciting now. All right. We don't see your picture if you want to. Don't see your picture, but you can speak if you'd like.
Sure.
Wait, hang on, guys. There's a really bad echo on everybody.
Okay, one sec, we'll fix that echo. You can just go out of my box because we're on the call. Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes. There's no echo as of right now. So go ahead, Miguel.
Can you hear me, Miguel? Are you able to hear me now?
I can, I can hear you.
Thank you. In your council packet, there is a supplemental item that I gave to the council. I just wanted to update you and let you know what happened since the public hearing. In November, I met with several members of the Cordova Community and Historical Society. We had what I thought was a good meeting. We met for two, two and a half hours. And I was able to answer a lot of their questions. They expressed to me what they thought were inaccuracies in the existing conditions section of the report. And I did explain to them that the existing conditions section of the report isn't, it's really a snapshot of the Cordova Village. It's really designed to give the reader an idea for the context of the village itself. And a lot of, a lot of times, why we ask for an existing conditions section as well is to make sure that the consultants who develop the plan have a general or good understanding of the area that they're working with. And so I explained to them, for instance, when we list businesses in the existing conditions section, we're not listing every single business in Cordova. Again, it's just a snapshot of some of the businesses. I explained to them that the demographic data was based on a larger geographic area because that's the smallest area that we could get data from, from the U.S. Census Bureau. And so we had that type of discussion. I also talked to them about the purpose of the master plan. That the master plan really is there to, it's a statement of the community's visions and the goals for the community. Adoption of the plan, just like the comprehensive plan, it doesn't presume any automatic implementation. And I think that they were worried that it would. I assured them that a lot of these recommendations, obviously, would not be explored and refined or redesigned or designed the way that the master plan gives suggestions towards without the community's involvement in the implementation and certainly at the council's direction. Regarding, we talked about the email issue. I did go back and look at the sign-in sheets from the community meetings to make sure that they were all included in the list of emails that we have distributed out, which were about 68 people who gave us emails. I checked back the staff to see when we had distributed emails out. We talked about that. So there were emails that came out in January. We gave them emails or an email when we went on lockdown for a little bit to let them know that things were postponed. And then about five, six other emails through the course of the year as meetings were scheduled. And so I didn't sense from our meeting that there was, I didn't get anything specific in terms of recommendations that the representatives did not like. If anything, I think that there were recommendations in there that they actually preferred and that we pursue and pursue quickly. Relocation of the collection centers is an example of one of those. So, you know, that's just, a lot of what I just. So, you know, that's just, a lot of what I just mentioned is in the supplemental item that I provided you. And the last thing I wanted to mention is Zach Smith, who is the attorney for Nagel Farm Service. He and I worked out some language, which was a paragraph that we added on page fifty-four related to potential rouse trails, bicycle and, or multimodal trial. And in your item, I attached page fifty-four and highlighted in yellow that paragraph that we agreed upon. And, you know, and I stand for any questions beyond that. Okay, I open it for counsel discussion.
Miguel, Mr. Sladeus, could, could you, could you talk about what you have done since we introduced this in terms of, of updates and changes, which I understand are non-substantive, but nevertheless might have, have addressed some of the concerns that were raised by, by those citizens in Cordova?
Sure, the, since the introduction of the legislation? Sure. The, the major change is the addition of the paragraph on page fifty-four, which, which you have. And also, there was a, a minor error. It was non-substantive in the existing conditions section. Referred to the Baptist Church as Methodist. And I'm not sure if the Baptists would have liked that. So we changed it back to Baptist. And, and beyond that, from the meeting, I, I didn't, there wasn't anything else that came out that, that needed changing. I wasn't given a list of inaccuracies, so I couldn't do anything more than that. So, Mr. Vice President, I just wanted to, it, I, I think you were asking, one of, one of the issues was a Nagel farm. They had big concerns about, you know, rails to trails and, you know, coming through there in trucks, traffic, stuff like that. So I think Miguel has done a great job and Mary Kay trying to reword some of that stuff to make them feel that there wasn't going to be a, a traffic issue down the road. You know, so I, I think, I think that was one of the main safety issues. And they've done a good job to handle that. And I think the Nagels are in, in pretty good shape with that. President Callahan, just for any public who's listening, I can read that paragraph. Yeah, I, I think that's a great, I was, I was really thinking about that, Miguel. That's a, that's a great, yeah, would you mind reading that for the public, for the public record, please? Sure. The additional paragraph on page fifty-four of the draft master plan states, "If a trail is built in this area, the alignment and amenities will be designed in a manner that will not adversely impact active farming operations for adjacent businesses such as Nagel Farm Services." Sounds great. It sounds great.
So we've had, we've had some other input and a letter from the Cordova Historical Society as a, you know, as recent as this morning. You know, they had, it said, you know, how well-attended the meetings were, you know, this time a year ago. And that some meetings had not been able to take place, obviously, due to COVID this year. And with something as important as this, you know, is it worth waiting, you know, a little bit longer to make sure that everybody has been able to have input? Because while a couple of things may have been addressed, there may be other people out there who are not tuned in to the fact that this is going on or don't feel like they have a way to really reach out to us. So would it make sense to, to delay this? I mean, it is a master plan. Maybe we should be waiting another three or six months to make sure that we've gotten all of the input and addressed any potential problems.
Mr. Sladeus, could you, could you go back and, and just, just summarize for the public's benefit? The, sort of the, the purpose and, and force of, of a master plan? What's, what are the implications of adopting this?
Sure. The adoption of the Cordova Village Master Plan, just like the adoption of the Tillman Village Master Plan and the Bellevue Village Master Plan is incorporated as part of our comprehensive plan. So the master plan, any, any, whether it's a comprehensive plan or a master plan, what that really is, is it's, it, it gives a statement of the community's visions and goals. And it sets a number of policies, sometimes a number of objectives, which are recommendations that are adopted by the legislative body. And by adoption of that, it, it sets a tone or direction for, for potential future implementation, either through zoning, either through capital projects, through, you know, grant programs, through, there's all kinds of different ways to do implementation. Master plans, just like comprehensive plans, can change over time. The illust, the illustrations that are typical in master plans are illustrations. They're illustratives that show a potential way of doing things. But because that graphic is in the master plan, doesn't mean that that is exactly how it's going to look if it's ever implemented. A lot of times, the implementation of something like a village park requires the participation of departments like Parks and Rec, the Office of Tourism, and the citizens themselves in terms of designing the details of what actually would happen there. Okay, all right. Any more counsel comments?
So I, I've, I attended, I think, one of the meetings out in Cordova. I, I've read through the master plan. And I, I've received, we've received a ton of email. Well, not a ton, but a significant number of emails from people in Cordova. I did speak with the Nagel Farm Service family about some of the concerns that they had. I'm glad that we're addressing them. And it, it even says in the plan to, to make sure to protect the Nagel Farm Service business that's there. Whoever wrote this, I, I've never seen retain used so many times and so many different ways and synonyms for it. That it's very apparent to me that Cordova, like Bellevue, does not want to see change. But what they do want is a, a few things adjusted where they're still being able to retain what they always were. So kind of, you know, think of the Rice's Country Store, the A-one Liquor Store, the, it's some stores that are there, that businesses that could benefit the small community. Little walking paths across the road to facilitate, facilitate safety for those who need to walk across, some aesthetics, some of those issues. But, and anytime you give it to government, it's going to take forever and it's going to be a lot. So I think a lot of people are seeing the ninety-four or ninety-five page document and getting intimidated by it. But when you go through it, it, I, I like it and I think it's, it's appropriate. And I'd be willing to vote on it tonight. But again, I do understand big documents can be intimidating for a lot of the community. But this would really, in my opinion, protect Cordova, maintain what it is and slowly allow it to, to bring back some businesses that it may have lost without, without requiring anything. As we got, this does not, this is not a foundation. This is not a, a solid start for any kind of construction, design, or improvement. It's, it's just a, not a wish list, but an idea, comprehensive one.
Right.
Going through it, there was one other, there's so much to it. Oh, the cell phone town. There, one person did email about that, that they wanted more information about that. And Miguel and Mary Kay, you know, if we're talking about Cordova, I'm going to bring it up. And I know that we are moving, hopefully moving forward quickly with that. But those are the types of improvements that they want to see, be able to use technology a little bit better, but just be safer, relocate some of the ugly stuff, the recycling things that everybody in every town hates. But I, it's, it is a good document that I'm impressed with how well it has been put together. But don't let the size of it intimidate you. It, read through it and I think you'll be impressed with it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. DeVilleo. Mr. Pack, you okay?
Yes, I, I'm, I'm certainly ready to proceed with the bill this evening. Mr. Callahan, I think the staff, Mary Kay and Miguel has taken the same approach they did with Bellevue and Tillman Island. The community was contacted, the community was engaged, the community had opportunity to respond and give input on several occasions, not just one meeting, but several meetings. I think to my count, Cordova has over a thousand residents. We've gotten three emails, three, from citizens. And one, counting Mr. Zach Smith regarding Nagel Farm, has already been addressed as, as Mr. Sladeus has already pointed out. So that particular question and point has already been remedied. Again, this does not change the table of use in the village center of Cordova. Those items listed there on the table of use do not change. This is a, a guide, if you would, for as future development and future businesses come into the Cordova area, where they should lay in that, that's, that village center. We've done the same thing in Bellevue. We've done the same thing in Tillman Island. The comprehensive plan that was passed by the council does dictate that those VCs much have, must have a, a, a village comprehensive plan. And that's what staff is, is attempting to do here. I support it. I think they have checked all of the boxes. And the community was thoroughly engaged and their input has been received and acted upon.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Everybody had really, really great, go, go ahead, Pete.
Just, just to echo some of, of Mr. Pack's remarks, you know, the, the community, sometimes, when you're doing these kinds of planning projects, getting public engagement is tough. And what we saw with the Cordova Village Master Plan was really impressive, a really impressive level of public engagement. People really turned out. People really provided substantive feedback. And, and the document does, does reflect that, the substance of, of that feedback. Now, there isn't complete, there wasn't complete consensus in the room and therefore, you know, different ideas, opposing ideas. Some people are, feel that, that, may have felt that, that it wasn't representative of, of their views on, on a particular issue, on the, on the rail trail or on the location of, of the, of, of some other element. But I want to commend the, the, the planning staff for, not only, not only with the consultants getting that initial engagement, but also for continuing to work with people even after this was introduced, meeting with, with these citizens, continuing to tweak this, continuing to make corrections and, and, and sort of fill in the gaps, in, inform people about, about what, what this is really about and what the implications are. You know, this, this will, this hopefully will empower that community to, to maintain its identity in, in the way that, that I think is, is genuinely reflected in the document as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lesher. So just to let counsel know, we do, we do, if you'd like, we do have an option. We do have an option, we can vote on it tonight or we can vote it on it next week. So how does counsel feel? It looks like the majority feels like we're ready to vote tonight.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I will make a motion that we bring Bill fourteen sixty-five, the master plan, to vote.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to vote on Bill fourteen sixty-five. Madam Secretary, can you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill fourteen, fourteen sixty-five has passed. So good job, Miguel and Mary Kay, with all your hard work and counsel too. Because we all, we all tried to put our inputs and, and go to some of those meetings. And, you know, I think at, at the end of the day, Cordova is going to be a prosperous town. And it's going to add a little bit of bright light to that town. So I appreciate it. Yeah, President Callahan, it's Miguel. And just for those that are listening too, thank you, counsel, for the support on this project. And I look forward to reaching out to the, the Cordova Community and Historical Society and, and working with them on, on, on the interest of their community. So thanks. Okay, thank you, Miguel, appreciate it, everything. Thanks a lot. Mary Kay, you on there? You didn't say much.
I'm here, that's all right, thank you very much. We look forward to working with the village and implementing some of these ideals based on their input.
Okay, I'm glad now because you don't, you don't have much longer here. We need to hear your voice.
Thirteen more workdays, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, exactly. What's the time? All right, see, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we got next on the agenda. We've got a request from the community faith leaders to meet with counsel to discuss the Talbot Boys. Mr. Pack has put this on the, the agenda. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it to counsel for discussion. Mr. Pack, you want to start?
Mr. Callahan, again, as a point of order, and Mr. Cooper Smith could certainly chime in and, and speak to this, when the council gets a request from the community to meet, we must deliberate that request in public. It cannot be done in closed session behind closed doors or through secret voting or secret balloting. So my putting this on the agenda was just to meet that requirement. Certainly doesn't say that I'm in favor of it one way or another or opposed of it one way or another. It's just to fulfill the requirement. It must be put, put on the agenda for public debate by the council, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Anybody else for discussion? Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, I, 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 I'd be interested in hearing from my colleagues about, about where we want to be on, on this process. The, the last time we, we got a request, we, we said we were concerned about timing. Are we, are we still at that point? Do we want to set, do we want to set some sort of, of endpoint for ourselves? Say that, you know, a workshop in January or, you know, do, do we, do we want to sort of give some indication about, about where we are in the process at this point? In our, in our individual efforts?
Open it up for discussion? Is there any discussion? Okay. You raising anyone to say something or you good? Are you good, Mr. DeVilleo?
Yeah, sorry, I was waving out to, to Tony.
Okay, so looks like there's not a whole lot of discussion. So I, I would, I'm just, I'm just, I think I'm going to propose to handle the matter like the request of the NAACP several weeks ago with, with the faith leaders. I think individuals like ourselves can reach out. The faith leaders can call us and we can, I'll be, I'll be glad to meet with them. And I'm sure counsel would be glad to meet with them. So that's, that's where we're at.
I, I'm confused, sorry, this is right to DeVilleo. So Pete, what, I, I'm not sure what you're asking, Pete.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I, I know that, that we've, we've had individually a number of those conversations with members of the community. I know that, that some of us have, have made efforts to, to find sort of, some sort of solution, some sort of next step that, that might bring us to, to consensus on this. And, and my question was simply, do we want to, do, do we want to, do we want to set a date for, for a public workshop? If that is a logical next step, you, with, with, with this request to, to meet with the council? Or do, 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 is it appropriate this time to, to give some sort of public indication of, of where we are in this process?
That answer your question, Mr. DeVio? I can't hear you. Can't hear you.
I'm not sure what the process we're regarding, we're talking about. Is there legislation?
No.
After that we're discussing?
I, I think if I, if I may, Mr. Lesher, of course, correct me if I'm wrong and, and what I'm hearing you say is that if, if, if this body or, or majority of this body are going to continue to deny meeting with the public, for whatever reason, whether it be because of the pandemic which we're facing, I believe what Mr. Lesher said is there's some sunsetting of that reasoning that give the public some indication, are we not meeting with the public through, through January? We're going to be in, in virtual setting through the month of January. Are we going to say to the public, and this may not be the last group to come before this council to speak about social justice issues and Confederate statues and maybe other groups will come along as well? Do you want to send a message to the public to say, hey, look, we're not going to take any requests to meet publicly as a group? Because they were very clear, Reverend Browning and Rabbi Heineman and Reverend Wallace and the good Reverend Powell were very clear. They wanted to meet as a group, not as individuals, but as a group. So I believe what Mr. Lesher is saying, are we going to give the public some indications when we are willing and comfortable to meet with them as a group? Is it through January, is it through February, is it through March? Or is it never?
I, I believe that, that opportunity ended when you called for a vote on the issue.
I have not called for a vote on anything.
Mr. Pack, you called for a vote on the Talbot Boys statue when we could have left it open and continued having conversations with groups, but you called for a vote.
Okay, so here's, here's what we're going to call.
Again, again, Mr. Lesh, I was just trying to sum up what I'm hearing, Mr. Lesh.
But you put this on the, you've put this on the agenda twice now. You've put two different groups on the agenda twice now on legislation that we already acted upon, right? When you had the opportunity that you could have included them before. So are they looking to submit a letter on behalf of their, their congregations to us to put it into the writing because they didn't have the opportunity? Are they upset that you didn't call them beforehand? Or are they just? I, I don't know whatever else there would be. You called, we called for, you called for a vote and we took action. Why do you continue to put these people on the agenda?
Mr. DeVio, I, I explained the process before we, we initiated with this. When a body of citizens requests a meeting with the council as a group, and this is, I'm reading this email just like you are, that consideration has to be done in public. It is not me putting it on. I'm one council member. I'm, I'm addressing, I'm addressing the letter that was, or email that was addressed to all of us and that must be considered publicly. So again, whether I support meeting with them or not is, is not relevant. What is relevant is that it must be addressed publicly.
Okay, so here's what we're going to do. We've got a consensus that we're going to handle this matter just like we did last time.
I didn't say that you have a consensus, Mr. Callahan. That's not true.
Okay. What, what's not true about it?
Well, I, I haven't, I've only heard from Mr. Lesh, I haven't heard from Ms. Price. I don't know if, if you do have consensus. We, we certainly heard your, your point, everyone.
You want to say, you want to say something real quick here? Laura?
I think we'll just continue with the discussion that we had last month and continue to meet individually. I'm comfortable with that.
Let's, let's go with, you know, the consensus of how we want to, you know, people to, to meet with us and we're willing to meet individually and we've gone over all that stuff. So I, I have no problem with that. So, all right, let's, let's move on to county manager report. Andy?
So let me, before we do, Mr. Lesh, are you, are you basically saying to this group of religious leaders that, are we saying, I mean, you haven't taken a vote on this. I don't know if this is.
We're not taking a vote.
Okay, so you're, so am I hearing?
We're done, we're done with it. We've got a consensus that we're moving on.
You have a consensus that you're moving on?
Right.
So what, what does that, what does that mean as far as how are you going to?
It means the same thing as we met last time.
So I'm.
Because we're not meeting with, we're not going to go with, we're not going to, we're not going to run off the road and tell one group we're not, how we were going to handle it and then we're going to another group and we're going to handle it a different way. So we're going to handle it and we're going to be, we're going to be considered to all groups and this is what we're doing. This is what council's comfortable with at, at this point.
Okay, so back, back to Mr. Lesh's point, is, is this going to be the standing practice or is there going to be some sunset, some sunsetting of this practice?
Mr. Pack, would you like to like choose January for, for an opportunity that anybody in the county can come in and hold a work session with something they don't like that we voted on in the past? Maybe the River Keepers could come in and talk or maybe we could invite the people who've been emailing us about trap recently. Is that what you're looking for?
I, I think that, that again, going what Mr. Lesh have pointed out, I think we need to send the community some kind of signal as when will we be open, when we will be open collectively to meet with them.
Mr. Pack, we had those open meetings to meet with people. We had that opportunity and that stopped when you closed the door with the vote. The vote's been called, right?
I mean, Mr. DeVio, you, you have mischaracterized that several times already. So the public will is asking to meet. Are we going to say that we're going to be sunsetting or is this going to be the?
We don't, we don't have to do that. We don't. We've, we've already told them, Mr. Pack, and, and then we need to move on. So county, I, I, I need, I need to move on.
Will you be right, well, as a point of order, will you be writing them? How will you be responding back to this group? Are you writing?
I don't have to write, I don't have to write to them. They can write to me and I can meet with them.
As, as far as the requests that you have in your hand, Mr. Callahan, are you going to be addressing them in writing or how you, will you be responding back?
Mr. Pack, I, I don't believe this is in order.
It, it really, it really isn't, Mr. Pack. We're doing the same thing that we've done the last meeting. We've made it crystal clear with people, okay, that want to meet with us on this particular subject, okay? Where council's not comfortable at this point.
Mr. Callahan, I, I, I'm hearing what you're saying. We don't know if these requests are online today. My question to you, are you writing them back? Are you emailing them back? Are you calling them back?
He's not calling them, he didn't give a phone number.
To notify the requests of the decision. That's my question. Are you writing them? Are you calling them? You don't, don't assume that they're on this call this evening. We don't know.
Nobody's assuming anything. You're saying that.
Well, then my question to you again, sir, is how are you going to respond back to their requests?
How about we send the same letter we sent back to the NAACP? We'll just copy the letter and change names and send the same response back we sent back last month.
Right. Work, Mrs. Price? Again, I was just trying to find a point of how we responding back.
Okay. Okay, are you satisfied with that?
But just to say we're moving on is not a proper response. How are you going to respond back to them?
Okay, we're going to respond to them with the same letter we spent in NAACP. Is that, is that, is that sufficient? Okay.
That is, that is an appropriate and proper response. Yes.
Fine. Can I move on now?
Yes.
Okay, Andy?
We all know, now that we all know how we're going to respond back to these citizens.
Evidently not.
Okay, Andy.
So we're requesting council approval for amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement between Maryland Environmental Service and the county to extend the term of the agreement from January one of 2021 to December 31st of 2030. Ray Clark, your county engineer is on here. I don't know if Ray wanted to add anything to that or not. He's muted right now.
Ray, are you, are you with us?
I'm here with you. Can you hear me?
Okay, all right, my man, yeah.
The amendment is associated with cleaning up the recycling sites and so the, the service agreement that we're also asking you to approve is basically the continuation of, I guess, the landfill in Caroline County as well as the county operating the waste transfer station off of Barker's Landing Road.
Any, any questions from council? Are we, Andy, are we gonna, are we gonna vote on these individually or we're going to go through the agenda and vote on them all?
I can do it either way. If you'd like me to run through them all unless anybody has an objection, you can do a collective vote at the end.
Council, can we do a collective vote at the end? Is council comfortable with that?
You got two more items under Public Works if you'd like me to get them and add it to it.
Let's do that.
Why don't you just work down it and if, if somebody's got any questions, we'll, we'll just work through them.
So we're requesting council, sorry, okay, requesting council approval for the USDA loan of $350,000 and a grant of $1,050,000 for the St. Michael's collection system upgrades. Mr. Clark, do you have anything?
Just to let the council know, on the, I guess, the last bill that you all voted on for $350,000 as well as $223,000, that is actually loans that are being paid for by the town of St. Michael's. The sanitary district will only be assuming a loan of $1,452,000 for the sewer collection work.
Counsel, can you hear me on this item? I believe rural development will require a separate vote on these two items because we have to complete a form showing how you voted on these two documents for them. So while they're all part of the same loan resolution that you adopted with the, or part of the borrowing that you approved with the bill earlier, rural development has their own specific forms with a specific role call that we will need to complete. So I do think these two items need to be addressed individually.
So, Mr. President, if you'd like a clerk to call for a vote?
That, that would be great.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
All right.
So the second item with USDA is we're requesting your approval to, for the USDA loan of $2,024,000 and a grant of $6,071,000 for the St. Michael's collection system upgrade. Mr. Clark?
No comments on this. This is the same work that we've been doing.
That's good. Madam Secretary, can you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat? Mr. Pat?
Pat, can you take your mute off?
All right.
All right, sounds good.
So council continuing on, we're requesting your approval to award bid 20-12 Aviation Engineering Consulting Services to AECOM Technical Services for a period not to exceed five years. Total six bids were received reviewed by the airport manager and the board with unanimous decision to support this recommendation. Continuing on and then taking a collective vote at the end, we're requesting your approval to purchase 25 desktops and five laptops for county employees at a total cost of $34,318.25. Your finance, your finance directors confirm there's $35,000 available in your capital outlay budget under the county manager portion of it for that purchase. This is an annual purchase. Additionally, separately, we're also requesting council approval to procure 16 AEDs from Stryker Medical at a cost of $25,220. It's a sole source procurement due to the equipment compatibility issue. Private donor has donated $25,000 in the name of the Paramedic Foundation for the purchase of the AEDs. The remaining $220 will come out of the DEF budget. Requesting council approval for a letter of support from the, for the University of Maryland Center for Environmental Sciences, application to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration for a project entitled Integrated Modeling to Guide Coastal Management Decision on How to Green Existing Gray Infrastructure to Extend Its Effectiveness Against Sea Level Rise. This project seeks to counter the effects of sea level rise on both the Tred Avenue and Harris Creek watersheds. No county fund required. Next, we are requesting council approval to utilize the county's open engine, open-ended engineering contract to obtain design and build plans for the community center expansion from Davis Bowen and Fredell in amount of $255,900. Costs are eligible for program open space reimbursement. And finally, before you take a vote, we're requesting council approval to move forward with the Easton High School roof replacement project. The Board of Education has been notified by the state board that they will be funding 50% of this project. It's been included in your capital improvement program with $1,032,000 in the upcoming fiscal year and $1,032,000 in fiscal year 23. Formal approval from the state's anticipated by May. Angela, did you want to add to that or are you comfortable with that?
I am comfortable with that.
Great.
Thank you.
So council, that's a lot, but if we could have a collective motion, unless you have specific questions, that would be terrific.
We approve all of the others. Council, have any questions on these items, these requests? Any, anything on these requests?
This, Councilman DeVio, I'll second Mr. Pack's motion to accept all of these. I believe we reviewed them all. For the most part, a lot of these were done when we were doing the budget planning. So happy to second it.
Okay, I got a, a, a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you please call for the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Pat?
Mr. Pat?
I, I got you. Okay.
So council, we now have four separate boards to have appointments. I'll go through all of them and ask for approval unless there's a concern. The Department of Social Services is requesting the reappointment of Dr. George River to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. Red Cross Delmarva is requesting the appointment of Jeffrey Baggett, who's their disaster program manager to the local emergency planning committee. The Tom County Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council is requesting the reappointment of Sarah Cloxton and Terry Kokolas. And the tourism board is requesting the reappointment of Mark Salter, who's with the Robert Morrison. So if I could have a motion, council?
I'll make a motion to council approve all of the board replacements and reappointments.
DeVio, I'll second.
Yep, we got a motion and a second to the appointments. Madam Secretary, could you please call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Andy, for a good job. I really appreciate it. So let's, let's move on to Mr. Parker on, on public comments.
Mr. Mr. Callahan, before we do that, real quick.
Yeah, no problem.
I would like to be able to, if we could go back to asking for the contact information for the callers, because it is nice to be able to follow up with them.
Yes. So, so, so I didn't quite hear that. Say what now?
The, the contact information. We used to get the name and the address for the person who was making, who came in for a comment. I don't know.
Oh, I see.
Has a list of the phone numbers for him that he could relay to us afterwards. I just, it's nice for us to be able to follow up with the individuals when they are calling in for public comment.
I would actually like to chime in on that. I never agreed with that policy of not knowing where the people were from. I will listen to everybody, of course, but I do want to know if they, if they are living in Talbot County, so while they don't need to give their street address, I would appreciate it if staff would get their contact information, as Mr. DeVio is saying, so that we can follow up after that. I think that's really important that we are primarily answering to, to our Talbot County citizens while we will certainly listen and consider to everybody who chooses to call in. That is important to me.
Yep, okay, yep, I understand. Mr. Hollis, can, can we make sure that, that we get that information when we, when we do these meetings?
Yes, sir. If that's the council direction, I'll look to Mr. Durham to also help with that as well when the caller's on the line.
That'd be great.
Okay, do we have a timer or is this open?
Nope. Nope. So, so we'll have, Mrs. Price is gonna take, take the, do the time. So we've got individuals for three minutes and we've got groups and organizations for five minutes.
We do have a caller. I will unmute the first caller. Caller, please begin.
Hi, I'm Denise Lombard. I live on Tillman Island. I'm one of the people that convened the Move the Monument Coalition. And, you know, I would, I, we, I still want the monument moved. And it's a stain on not just Eastern, but all of Talbot County and all of the eastern shore to have a symbol of white supremacy and slavery and racism on the public property where people have to go to the courthouse to try to get justice, especially if they're black and other people of color. I'm pretty appalled at how angry Mr. DeVilleo, Mr. Callahan seemed about having this come up and up again. The reason is because we want reconsideration. There is no legislation right now, but this issue is not going to go away. It will come up and there will be, you know, groundswells to try to get it removed off of the courthouse property. It could go into storage. We don't really care where it goes. It's just not appropriate for it to be on public property. We, I feel like you just feel like it's an annoyance and a, you know, pain in the butt to have this come up over and over again. There have been faith leaders, lawyers, veterans, business people, community leaders, all speaking out against this. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people. This is not just some little ragtag group, you know, trying to be a, a thorn in your side. This is a very substantial movement of citizens of Talbot County. So, and meeting individually can just be, you know, okay, I met with you guys next. There's no, we're trying to have a civil conversation about what we see as the real issues of, of this monument and its representation of our county. And, you know, we, we hope to have a civil and intelligent conversation. We do not want to just come and, you know, make you suffer. So.
Eight seconds.
So that's what I have to say. The monument must go. It's a symbol of racism and slavery. And if Mississippi can take the Confederate flag out of its flag, any other southern.
Thanks for calling in, Mrs. Lombard. Really appreciate you calling in tonight.
Okay, the next caller we have is another phone caller. And please begin.
Hi, this is Clive Ewing from Easton, Maryland. And I just wanted to weigh in on the Talbot Boys Monument issue since it was on the agenda. I guess it was Albert Einstein who's credited with saying, "Definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, but expecting different results." I do appreciate President Callahan and other members of the council offering to meet with folks individually on this topic. I think that makes a lot of sense to give folks directly your ear to the issue. I know that a lot of folks have felt threatened to speak out publicly, and that's really unfortunate. And, and, and so I'm glad that you guys are willing to meet individually with, with everyone. Many folks in this community with deep roots, they go back many generations, feel strongly that those men need to be honored on that monument because they fought the tyranny of the federal government at that time that was unique to the state of Maryland and Talbot County, unlike Virginia, unlike Mississippi, that the federal government treated our citizenry so poorly. Members of our community held in prison without the benefit of a trial. That had a major impact. And it flows through our blood to our generation. And so we honor those men. So I know it's a contentious issue, but there's two sides to the story. So I appreciate what the council has done and the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing, for calling in tonight. We appreciate your comments. Thanks a lot. Any other callers?
No other callers have indicated they wish to speak.
Okay, no other callers. So, okay, that, now we're gonna wrap things up with council comments. Mr. Vice President?
I, I have nothing further this evening.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Pack?
Things, I want to first again echo my appreciation to the Cares Committee for all the work that they've done up to this point. And the, certainly want to also thank this council for supporting those recommendations from that committee. I think that it will certainly help individuals here in Talbot County, both small business, thought of your firemen, and individuals as we try to touch as many people as we possibly can. Look, once again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be clear, as clear as I possibly can. Whenever a group of citizens requests to meet with this council collectively, I will put it on the agenda for us to consider. Doing that does not in any way say that I am for or against what the requests are seeking. It's just that as a rule of procedure, this body needs to do so publicly to respond to that. So I know there's been a lot of disinformation as far as my placing this on the agenda. The county attorney has been very clear about this point, that this council must address these issues publicly. And so therefore, placing this on the agenda was not my saying that I support a meeting or does not, or do not support a meeting. These are your citizens. They're requesting to meet with you, and you need to give them an answer, up or down. And that's why it's on the agenda. So I just want to make sure that that is very, very clear to whomever is listening, that the requests can request to meet with this council. We have the right to respond to them, or they have the right for our response and for our deliberation to be done publicly. And that's what we just did, and that's what they just saw. Just want to clip another, another point that I read in the paper some weeks ago regarding the tabling of the question on Case Point Road. Ms. Callahan had made that request to table it, which the council did, did honor. And, and somehow it got spun around that I was tabling them, tabling the, the resolution, which, which is certainly not, not the case. This was something that council had decided to do at Ms. Callahan's request, and, and therefore it's, it was tabled. It has no simulation at all to the Talbot Boys statue that council voted on several months ago. It has nothing to do with the Cordova, with the Corona pandemic, only in this regard, in my statement regarding the COVID-19 virus, is that people need to be able to get out and enjoy their surroundings. And closing this roadway off at a time when people want to get out and walk the roadway and access the Chop Tank River is probably not a good idea. And that's what I, that's what I was talking about as far as, as this not being the right time to do it because of COVID-19. Not to say we can't make any decisions because of COVID-19. My response was the fact that people need to get out of their homes and enjoy the outside and enjoy the scenery. And you don't want to deny that to them during a time when people have been confined to their homes. So I just want to be very, very clear on that, that my statement regarding Case Point Road and, and the COVID-19 was not to say that we couldn't make any decisions on it, only that people should be allowed to get outside their homes and enjoy the scenery. So with that, Mr. Callahan, I'll stop.
Okay, Mr. Pack, thank you. Ms. Price?
Get myself unmuted. I mentioned earlier, we're gonna get an update tomorrow with our Mako Budget and Tax Meeting. So we are in the middle of another virtual Mako conference, which we've had some weekly updates, and each of the three subcommittee chairs, of which I'm still, for another couple of weeks, Chair of the Budget and Tax Committee. We had the land use one on Friday. Tomorrow is Budget and Tax, where we will be getting an update from Andy Schoffel and from the gentleman from Naco. And then on Friday, it will be the update from the Education Subcommittee and a special extra hour on the Kerwin legislation that we've all heard so much about. We, last week had an update just on what to expect in the upcoming legislative session, how things will be run differently. Committees now will be run virtually. Everything will be submitted in packets electronically, much like we receive our information electronically. So Mako is alive and well, and we are running virtually. We're getting ready to have our installation of officers and progression in two weeks on the 18th. So all of the elected officials and staff, certainly, we encourage you to, to dial in to these sessions live, but they were also all recorded. So if you've gotten the invite in your email, you can go back and watch it later. And, and just wanted to give you that, that update on what's going on with Mako, since we are missing yet another conference time. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. DeVilleo?
So, we just passed Thanksgiving. I would like to just take a couple of seconds to just say thanks to the council. All of you guys have been instrumental and helpful to me throughout the process of being a new council member, either from the very beginning with Mr. Pack as a president. He was someone, I, I remember seeing him at the farmer's market a couple of years ago, many years ago, when, after I'd voted for him, I was so excited that he, he was in, he was voted, voted in, he was there with his wife. Here's this community leader shopping at the farmer's market. I'm just a young, excited voter getting to see him. And I, I still remember that. And, and for when we first started out, how, how great he ran all the meetings. We all remember how terrible the election was and how everything went. And I, I always thought that he was just very fair in those meetings and making sure that we all had the appropriate amount of time and was very helpful to me in that time. Mr. Lesher is an incredible wealth of knowledge, and I, and he shares it. And I, I can't thank him enough for that. He's somebody that allows me to give him my opinion of where I stand on something. And he says, well, Frank, let's look at it from this way. And, and we do. And it's, it's positive and it's beneficial. And I thank him for that. And Mrs. Price, numbers in the budget, you've had your hand on that, holding that thing tight for a while. And, and it's great to have that, that knowledge that you can go back and say, here's how we got to where we are. And here's the group that's always asking for a little bit more, and we give them a little bit more. But this is one thing they always ask for, that maybe we can put off, or things like that. And, and I thank you for, for sharing those numbers. And Mr. Callahan, I, I greatly appreciate the wake-up calls. You call me at 10:00 AM every morning to get me up. I, I appreciate that, bright and early. But this was your first meeting as a council president. I can't imagine the pressure that you feel, being virtual to, you know, adding technology with hiccups and problems. I think you did an excellent job, and I look forward to your leadership. You're somebody who answers the phone, your name's on the side of your truck. You can't be held more accountable than that. And you're out in this community, everybody knows you. You're a great individual, and I appreciate that. So thank you. Mr. Hollis, I'm, I'm gonna miss you. I think you've done an excellent job leading this county for many years. And I'm, I'm really gonna miss the relationship we've, we've built and developed. And I'm looking forward to building that same relationship with Clay, with Mr. Stampus, he moves on. So. And Angela, we're leaving you, losing you at the end of the year. I see you on the screen as well. And we're gonna miss you as well. But I, I just want to say thank you to you all. You, you've helped me get through, obviously, a tough two years, and I look forward to the next two. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVilleo. Very, very, very good marks from all of council. I want to sort of say the same thing as you guys. You know, I'm in this seat as being president, and it's, it's, it is a little bit, it is tough that what makes us all five of us special, that we're different. We come from different backgrounds. We're gonna agree to disagree. And that's what's gonna be fun about it, okay? So, you know, let's, we, we've got to respect everybody. We've got to stay on track. We've got to talk to each other. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be very, very adamant on communication, all five of us. If, if we have a, a, something that you guys need to talk to me about, just like Mr. DeVilleo said, you guys can call me anytime if you're upset or we need to do something, or, you know, you've had a citizen call you or something to that effect. More than open to listen and more than open to, to, to meet with somebody, with you. So I appreciate it. I appreciate the opportunity to lead you guys, and I can't thank you enough, too, with all the stuff that I learned from you guys, too. Because this is, this is a tough job. We're, we're in charge of 38,000 people, and we're in charge of keeping them healthy and safe. So that's a big burden on not just me, it's on all five of us, and keeping a phenomenal community. And when, you know, we're all from here, we all live here, and we're so proud of it, of what we accomplished to get to this point. So I really want to thank you guys, too.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
I just received a text message from somebody who was not able to get on the line, and I want to know if you'd consider having Mr. Durham check for a Mr. Hunter to open up a line, or if, I don't know if this gentleman's already, but he texted me twice and I didn't see it. And he really wanted to have his call taken during public comment.
At, at this time, is, 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 is Mr. Durham available?
We do have one other caller who has their hand raised, was raised after the council comments started.
Okay, is, is council okay for, for public comment? Is that okay with, with, with council? Okay, let's, let's hear it. Go ahead, caller.
Can you hear?
Okay, caller, begin.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't read the instructions that said press star three, and I'd been sitting there the whole time while everybody was making their comments. My name is Stephen Hunter. I'm a lifelong resident of Talbot County. And I just wanted to follow up on the comments about the Talbot Boys, to reiterate the fact from a citizen that there is a process in how government works. And it's, I've been watching all of your council meetings all throughout the pandemic. In fact, I've watched council meetings for a very long time. And we've gone through the process with the Talbot Boys, and yes, it was voted on. And yes, there are people out there that were not happy with the process. Yes, there are people that were not happy with the vote, et cetera. But again, there is a process. And the people who are being extremely vocal that were not happy with the outcome, that's all well and fine, but the rest of the citizens of Talbot County don't need to be held hostage by people who are being vocal and keep bringing it up. I look forward to the day that this issue is either put on the ballot, or we get past the pandemic, and we can have actual public comment, where we can get together as a community and talk as one, versus hiding behind Zoom calls, not getting to speak as a whole, or seeing a group of 50 people or 100 out of a county of thousands and thousands and thousands standing on the courthouse square. So I just want to applaud everybody who was on the council for your service to our community, because as Chuck Callahan said earlier, there are five of you, and all five of you come from different places. And I appreciate what all of you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. I appreciate you calling in, and, and we appreciate that. So, okay, counsel, does, anybody have anything else? Bye. We go ahead and.
Mr. Callahan?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Can we just make sure that there's nobody else in line on, on that public comment?
Wait. We sure can, Mr. Lesher, we sure can. Mr. Durham, is there, is there anybody else that, can you check for us?
Currently, no one has indicated they wish to speak. Callers, if you, if you press star three on your phone, it will indicate that you wish to speak.
And callers, if you, if you can hear us, you know, we'll be back next week too. I was getting ready to tell everybody. So Council will be meeting next Tuesday on the 15th, starting at 6:00. Council will start open session at, at 5:30 and immediately adjourn to close session for discussion of real estate, legal and personal matters listed in statement and closing at, at the meeting. Therefore, the motion to adjourn the meeting tonight, Madam Secretary, could you call, call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Thank you, Council.